April 20th, Board of Education meeting. We welcome you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And at this time, I'd like to call Mrs. Peters to do the invocation.
Thank you. We're thinking of our seniors and about for the next month as they're starting to embark on all their activities. I just found this. Tomorrow is a new day. Making mistakes is part of life. Saying no is okay. Not everyone has to like you. Beauty and strength come from within.
Okay. Thank you. Also, at this time, I would like to ask everyone to take a moment of silence for John Ellis Holston. He was our softball coach and lost his life last month. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And at this time, I'll call on Principal Brandy Kelly from Moyac Elementary School, who is going to introduce our student who's going to do the pledge, and then she'll be one of our spotlights.
All right. So we actually have three students that are going to do the pledge. So I would like to ask Mr. Cameron Wood, and then Max, and Violet Greaver, if you'll come on up. They are kinder. Then I have a first grader and a second grader, and they're going to lead us in the pledge.
Everyone stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all look amazing in purple. So we're here to talk about the Purple Star Award that we first got last year, and we have continued into this year. So I'm going to let Ms. Taylor. First of all, I'm Brandy Kelly. I'm the principal of Moyac Elementary School. And then Helen Taylor is our assistant principal, so she's going to kick us off.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. We want to tell you just a little bit about how we support our military families at Moyac Elementary School. So just a fun fact, Moyac Elementary School has 390 out of our 736 students that are militarily connected. So that's over half of our population at Moyac Elementary School. We are also a Purple Star Award schoolie. We received this award last year, and then it was recently renewed for this year along with several other students. So in 2019, or students, schools, excuse me. In 2019, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction launched the Purple Star Award Designation Initiative to recognize the state's strong military presence and its support for military families. The Purple Star designation is awarded to schools and districts that demonstrate military-friendly practices and a commitment to military students and families. Some of those practices, Ms. Kelly's going to talk to you a little bit more about what we do at our building. It's different recognition throughout the year, school projects, welcoming our military students, transitioning them when they move away, or they come in in the middle of the year. MES, like I said, achieved that first Purple Star Award for Coeur d'Alene County Schools last school year and the 21-22 school year, and we just have renewed our Purple Star once again this year, along with four other schools in our district: Shawboro Elementary, Knott's Island, Coeur d'Alene County High School, and Coeur d'Alene County Middle School. So we now have five schools in our district that are Purple Star Award schools that Ms. Kelly helped them to kind of initiate the process there for them as well. And then Ms. Kelly's going to talk to you a little bit more about how we strive to support the military children and families in our building.
So this one, we actually started this year. So as part of the Purple Star process, it first started with a school improvement team. We came together at MES, and we started looking at what does it entail to do the application? And a lot of the things that we had looked at, we were already doing. Our school counselor does a lot of support. We have transitions in place, and I'll talk about that in a second. And so this one, we actually started this year. This was, we're actually collaborating with Moyac Middle School with Melissa Reynolds, the principal there, and we decided to do a week-long Spirit Week instead of just one day of Purple Star. So obviously, today is Purple Star Day. It's called Purple Up for Military Kids, and it just shows support to all of those children who are military affiliated. So this is a picture of one of the days, of course, with the military branch. And then these are some more photos. We have camouflage day, and then this other one is a Purple Star Day from, or Purple Up Day from last year. And then this one is one from this year. So you see, most of our staff members, I was really pleased this year, pretty much the whole school staff-wise and students, dressed up. And of course, you have some that are super festive. More pictures, of course, of the kiddos today. And so this is a project that we started this year. This one was new, but as part of Purple Star, and just, and really, the intent of Purple Star in general across the state is just to bring awareness of supporting military families and their children, of course. And so, of course, when the school improvement team came together this year, some of the projects that we did last year, we thought, gosh, it was so, it was fun, it was collaborative, and it really did do what the intent of Purple Star was, which was to bring awareness. And so this year, we decided to do the Veterans Day Project. This was a collaborative project where we polled our parents, and we got a survey of how many veterans are in our students' lives. And we were shocked that there were so many. And so there were grandparents, reported mothers, fathers, and so we took their pictures that they uploaded for us, and then a little blurb about the family member, and then shout out to Rachel Salazar, she's one of our teacher assistants, and Maria Slaughter, another one of our assistants, and they created this incredible flag. We had this displayed in the front of the school, and we ended up leaving it there really after Christmas even, because at one point before Christmas, I said, well, I need to take it down. It's past Veterans Day. And the kids, I noticed coming in from morning when they were dropped off, they all still stopped and looked at the wall, pointing out their family members, and so we kept it up for a long time, and it was a pretty cool project. This project, we started last year. This was the Military Child Map Project. This also came about with school improvement team coming together and brainstorming different initiatives. Our parent population is so involved, and they're so incredible. I put something out on ClassDojo, and I say, hey, tell us, who is military, which we know all those facts, but anyone who wants to participate, who's military? How are you affiliated? And then we added the caveat, where do you live? Or where have you lived, based on deployment? And within 15 minutes, I had several, several responses, and it kept going. So we ended up with about 80 responses, and this is what we ended up creating. This is last year's map, created by Ms. Marcy Sawyer. She was our art teacher last year. She's at Shawboro this year, and it was pretty incredible. We had the gallery, and we had, if you ever saw it last year, it had the strings that connected all the different places. And again, it brought that awareness of the fact that, wow, these military children really do go from place to place to place, and they have to adjust in all these different areas. This is our Military Child Map from this year, and again, it is eye-opening. In just a minute, I'll show you all the different places these kiddos have lived, but there is no one better to speak about it than two of our students. So I would like to introduce Isabella Wood and Annabelle Greaver. They are both fifth graders at MES, and they're going to tell you about their experience.
My name is Isabella, and I'm in fifth grade at Moyac Elementary. Today, I want to talk to you about what it's like to be a military child. Being a military child means that one or both of your parents are in the military, and that can be a unique experience. For me, my dad is in the Marine Corps. One of the hardest parts of being a military child is moving around a lot. I was born in Hawaii, and when I was one, we moved to Colorado. I do not remember living at these duty stations because I was so young. My first duty station I remember is Camp Lejeune, North Carolina. That's when I met my first best friend, Lakin. My dad deployed most of the time we lived there, so we did a lot with Lakin's family. We went to school together and would hang out every day. When my dad returned from deployment, my dad found out we were moving. I was so upset. We ended up moving three hours away to Virginia Beach. This is the first time I had to deal with leaving a friend behind. Four years later, we are still friends and talk. Making friends in Virginia Beach was hard and scary. Once I started to go outside more, I met other kids who were also military kids, and we became friends. One year later, my parents decided to move to Moyac, North Carolina, and I started going to Moyac Elementary in third grade during COVID, when all schools were virtual. So it was even harder to make friends. All the kids that lived around us were boys, so I had no one to play with outside. Once school went back to in-person, I made a lot of friends. It was a lot easier here to make friends than it was in Virginia Beach. My dad got the opportunity to go back to Hawaii, but I did not want to move and have to start all over again with making friends. Thankfully, we all live here in Moyac, so my parents decided to stay here. At our school, we recognize lots of our military members by sharing their photos and little passages on the main hallway of our school. This week, we are celebrating military kids each day is a different category of dressing up. Today, we are wearing purple. Wearing purple shows support and signifies the unique sacrifices military kids make. Another symbol for military kids are dandelions. Dandelions are able to grow and bloom just about anywhere their roots are planted. That is why they are a perfect representation of a military child. In conclusion, being a military child can be both challenging and rewarding. It takes strength in being flexible in order to navigate the unique experiences that come with having a parent in the military. But military kids are strong and learn to thrive in any situation. They are a part of a large community that supports and cares for them, and they have opportunities to see and experience the world in ways that many other kids do not. Thank you for listening to my speech today about what it's like being a military child.
My name is Annabelle Greaver, and I'm in fifth grade at Moyac Elementary. I'm 11 years old, and I have already called six different places my home. I was born on Fort Bragg here in North Carolina, where my dad was a paratrooper in the U.S. Army. I've lived in Fayetteville, North Carolina, Fort Polk, Louisiana, Monterey, California, Pioneers, North Carolina, Tampa Bay, Florida, and now I live here. Being in a military family is tough because I have to move a lot and leave all my friends behind. One good thing is I get to go out and see new places. I like Moyac because people here are welcoming and friendly. I like how my school had a military wall, and they put up the names and pictures of military families.
So I'm absolutely not going to read all these places, but as you can see, these are some of the locations that our families submitted in all the different deployments that they've lived in. So they truly are, like Isabella said, they're like dandelions. They are very flexible, and they adapt to their environment. Another part of the Purple Star Project is we incorporated, obviously, classroom activities. That is where the meat and potatoes kind of is of learning anyway, is in the classroom. And so this is an example. This is actually, Mrs. Greaver's in the audience with her husband, and this was her second grade classroom earlier. This was around Veterans Day. And of course, the guest speaker was Lieutenant Colonel Bradley Greaver, who is also in the audience, and that's her husband. So she did a pretty neat project, showing the students, obviously, different writing, and then having them try on the uniform. They learned an incredible amount of information, and there's nothing like actually doing hands-on learning, so they really had their eyes open with that. And then, of course, other supports that we did, we have family tours, especially the last few years. I know Shawboro Elementary is feeling it now with the growth and new students every week. The last three years, Moyac started having new students, and a lot of them are military affiliated, and so we started doing new family tours. And so they would come in, I would show them around the building, show them classrooms, and then we would do that prior to the student's first day because we know that that is a hard transition. When you go to a new school, you have no idea where to go. You don't know where to, you know, if you ride the bus, where's my classroom? And so we kind of do that tour with them to get them acquainted to the building. The other thing we do is social-emotional support groups, especially around deployment. It's very difficult for a family when a spouse or a husband, when someone, or a wife even, leaves, and then the child has to adapt. That's a hard change. Same thing when the parent comes back as well. And so Mrs. Cox, our school counselor, is incredible. She does individual sessions with students, and then she does groups as well when they're needed. The Coast Guard Buddy Mentor Program, we have not been able to get off the ground this year, or at least since COVID, but we are working on that as well. And our hope is to be able to expand that to other branches of the military, the Navy, and things like that. And so one of the other programs that we have had in the past is a buddy mentor program with a military person who can come in. They meet one child, they work with that one child throughout the school year, and that really helps with social-emotional learning as well. And then we have a military liaison, but the military liaison is from the Navy. He's up in Chesapeake, and so he's fantastic because a lot of the bases, of course, are in Virginia. And so Dr. Jeffrey McGee has reached out. He's been such a supportive role. He helps with parents, and then he gives us information as well. All right. So that's Purple Star. Thank you so much. Let me know if you have any questions.
I just have to say, I've been in the school and seen the displays that you have, and it brings tears to your eyes. And I would like you to have the young people who did the pledge, as well as your military people, and let's get a picture of all of them.
And great job. Those were wonderful speeches that your students made.
Did I not hear that there were some? Yeah, I was going to say. Don't be shy.
Can y'all go to the?
Thank you all for your service, those that serve in the military and your families.
And your families.
And the Braves.
Thank you.
That was a great presentation, Mrs. Kelly.
Thank you all so much for that presentation. It was very good. And now we have Principal Christian Love from JP NAP Early College. He's going to share.
I just want to say, coming from a military family, thank you for your service, and thank you for what you did at Moyac Elementary, and you all look awesome in purple.
Be kind to your mother.
Good evening, Chairman Craft, members of the board, Dr. Lutz. Scarlet. My name is Christian Low, and I'm principal at JP NAP Early College High School, and I am honored to be here this evening to introduce three phenomenal Spartans. Mrs. Cheryl Douglas, who is our economics and personal finance teacher at NAP, along with Ms. Emma Stark and Ms. Kennedy Phillips, two of Ms. Douglas's current students, whom I also had the pleasure of teaching. Ms. Douglas founded and implemented an incredible personal finance simulation program that allows students to engage in decision-based learning, making real-world financial choices that go beyond theory, and lets them experience in-class consequences of their decision-making, both good and bad. You all are in for a real treat today. Without further ado, here are your presenting Spartans.
Thank you, Mr. Low. As Mr. Low stated, my name is Cheryl Douglas, and I teach the economics and personal course at JP NAP Early College. In this course, we use the Stuken Personal Finance Simulation, which uses decision-theory learning to teach students the basic principles of financial literacy in a simple and powerful way. They're able to make decisions on how to spend their money in an ongoing role-playing simulation that has real in-class consequences. The model creates an environment where students' choices dictates their learning experience. Students master content and learn about themselves and their personal approach to financial matters. They learn to analyze their situation, needs, and goals while dealing with real consequences of their choices. As a result, students learn how to make smart financial decisions throughout their lives. To tell you more about this experience, I would like to introduce two JP NAP sophomore students who have been using the simulation this year, Kennedy Phillips and Emma Stark.
My name is Kennedy Phillips, and I'm a 16-year-old sophomore at JP NAP. So when we log into the simulation, our initial set status is a recent college graduate who is married with a household income of $65,000 and a student loan debt of $35,000. Each week in real life represents one month in the simulation, so at the beginning of every week, you will get your paycheck, and you will get the bills that you need to pay by the end of the week. And that screenshot shows what it looks like when you log into the simulation, and from the money you have, you have to determine how you want to divide it up into your different savings accounts, your down payments, investments, and you have to do that by yourself. That way, you are prepared for the future purchases that you have to make.
Hello. I'm Emma Stark, also a sophomore at JP NAP. So this is what it looks like when you first open your simulation. You're given a credit score and an academic grade, so based off of the choices you make and how often you pay your bills on time, and the kind of house and car you decide to invest in, your credit score and academic grade can go up and down. Speaking from personal experience, if you don't pay your bills on time, your academic grade and credit score will absolutely tank, but they come back up. They come back up. And from that, I learned it's much better to make mistakes in the simulation than in real life. Then down here, where you see it says "Payment History" with a little bit of red, you can also see, like, that's where it shows you where you've missed to pay your bills. And then with attendance, if you have any unexcused absences, you get fined, but if you don't, then you keep getting paid. So you get paid to come to school, which is pretty good if you have good attendance. Then over here is what it looks like when you go to pay your bills, and yeah.
So we have in-class jobs that Ms. Douglas creates for us, and we apply for whichever jobs we want, and she will either give us a job or deny it. Mostly, it is based on attendance, and the jobs add extra money to your paycheck every time you get one, so long as you actually do what the job requires.
So this is our transportation. At the beginning of the year, we're required to buy a car. So you get, you.
For their choices, by the way.
You get all different kinds of fun options. She lets us have fun with it. So over here, I'm going to go ahead and explain what we call perks. So basically, you get different things that you can either buy in a shopping mall, shopping mall in the simulation, or you get them that come with your car or your house when you purchase them. So the more expensive the car is, the more perks it's going to have, but you don't necessarily want to buy the most expensive car because of your credit score and such. Then over here in this column, you can see the price, then the miles per gallon, and then over here, it'll also show how much gas is going to tack on when you pay your car bill.
So housing is very similar with the perk aspect of it, where each house will give you different perks, and you get more the more expensive the house is. And then it shows you the prices for each house, and it also shows you the minimum down payment you have to make based on what your credit score is. From personally speaking, I can tell you, I got Elsa's Ice Palace, and like, two or three weeks into the simulation, I had to ask Ms. Douglas to remove that house because I could not afford it. But she was able to do that, and that is much better than like, asking like, your bank to take away your house in the future. But even though it came with more perks than the house I ended up getting, I could afford my current place much more, and it definitely helped with my debt ratio a lot more.
So this is my absolute favorite part of the simulation. So you get to invest in the stock market, and then if you click on the stocks themselves, you get short summaries of how the stocks are doing, to give you little hints on what you should and probably shouldn't invest in. And what this really taught me is originally, before I took this class, I thought investing in the stock market was for rich, old people. And what I learned in this class, that people of any financial status or age could invest in the stock market if they so choose. So this has led me to really consider taking advantage of the financial opportunities that are provided for me.
So one thing that comes along with our simulation is Life Happens, and we do it once a week, and it is exactly what it sounds like. You draw your name, and it randomly gives you either a good or bad event to show you how random things in life will affect your banking. So this is an example of a negative one, where out of nowhere, you suddenly have to pay $350, and the point of it is just to show you that there are unexpected things, and it helps to make sure that you're budgeting the right way. And here's an even worse one, where you lose $60,000 because it goes against your insurance. And there are ways to redraw it to try and get something better. It's one of the perks that comes along with houses or cars. But overall, Life Happens has taught me a lot about the fact that you cannot predict everything that you're going to need to pay for in the future, and that's why having savings is so important.
So this is where you can invest in different insurance things, and medical insurance, sorry. And then, so you can either invest in bronze, gold, or silver medical, and I don't know the difference.
At least I'm honest. At least I'm honest.
I love that child.
Most of us do. Thank you. Thank you.
It happens. We're not perfect, by no means, but I do want to share this. I had asked originally, you know, who wants to come with me tonight to share your experience of the simulation, and these two ladies are in my first block, and immediately, they were like, I'll go, I'll go. Well, then the other day, we were practicing, and I said, well, I feel like I should do something for you guys. So they both walk off together, and they start chit-chatting, and then they come back, and they say, I think you should give us $5,000 each in the simulation, and one redraw for Life Happens. Thank you so much.
You all rocked it, by the way. But how many times, as a math teacher, I got so many times, when am I ever going to use this in life? When am I going to use this? And I had a great answer for it, and it was legit, you know, well, you might not use this insert concept here directly, but you will use illogical reasoning to help you with the number sense, but what better way to throw them, you know, get them ready for life than the simulation that Ms. Douglas found? So, thank you.
I think that is awesome. I am a real estate agent, and I work with young people, first-time home purchase, and they are just learning the lessons that you're already learning. So great job. Great job. Yes. I think it's amazing, and Emma Stark, I love you. Emma lives in my neighborhood, and I've known her since she was a little girl, and you are a spot-on girl.
That was really neat. That was a great. It was great.
Thank you so much. So before, let's see, we have National Board Certification Teacher Recognition, Kristi Hodges.
Dear to my heart.
What a great evening. It's nice to be here tonight, too, to talk about national boards, but what a great presentation to follow. So good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Student Board Members, and Dr. Lutz. National Board Certification is a public assurance that teachers have met the profession's highest standards for accomplished practice. On February 7, North Carolina's Department of Public Instruction proudly shared that our state continues to lead the nation in the number of teachers who have earned certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, with an additional 486 teachers earning this endorsement during the 21-22 academic year, bringing the state's the state's total to twenty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight teachers with this respected credential. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing Currituck County educators who received National Board Renewal Certification and educators who can now call themselves National Board Certified Teachers. The National Board's renewal process and maintenance of certification is designed based on best assessment practices and by teachers to ensure that National Board Certification teachers continue to grow professionally while maintaining a strong impact on student learning. Joanna Bloom is a social studies teacher and department chair at Currituck County High School. Joanna initially certified in twenty-twelve and renewed in the area of social studies, adolescence, and young adulthood. Upon achieving renewal certification, Joanna shares, "It was a powerful learning experience that allowed me to reflect on my work as an educator. Now when I plan and reflect on my lessons, I constantly ask myself, 'How can I positively impact student learning?'" Joanna could not join us this evening, but I would like to extend a congratulations to her. Rachel Egan is a first-grade teacher at Charbrooke Elementary School. Rachel initially certified in twenty-seventeen and renewed this year in the area of early generalist, early childhood. Rachel shares, "This process has allowed me to reflect on my practices as an educator and has given me the opportunity to step up in leadership positions that I wouldn't normally feel comfortable doing on my own. I have grown as a teacher because of this process, and I am truly grateful for that." Rachel could not be with us this evening, however, I would like to extend a congratulations to her as well. Jamie Miller, our Director of Exceptional Children, initially certified in twenty-seventeen and renewed this December in the area of Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood Through Young Adulthood, Mild and Moderate Disabilities. Jamie shares, "Renewing my certification despite no longer having a classroom to call my own was a very difficult decision to make. The renewal process allowed me to reconnect with students, implement strategies that we ask our teachers to implement with their students, and remember and reflect on my original reason for wanting to become a teacher in the field of special education. The renewal process made me recommit to strengthening my knowledge and practices, which is something we as educators should continuously do." Certification by the National Board is the highest credential in the teaching profession, and participation is voluntary. As part of the initial certification process, candidates build a portfolio that includes student work samples, assignments, videotapes, and a thorough analysis of their classroom teaching. Three teachers in our district earned the prestigious distinction of National Board Certified Teacher in December. Tara Brinkley, if you wanna come on up here, is a second-grade teacher at W.T. Griggs Elementary School and became a National Board Certified Teacher in the area of literacy, reading language arts, early and middle childhood. Upon earning her National Board Certification, Tara shares, "It's always been my goal to be an accomplished teacher. The definition of an accomplished teacher just seemed too subjective to obtain. The National Board process taught me what an accomplished teacher is and gave me the pathway I needed to reach my goal. The bonus is I found a community of like-minded, supportive educators." Shannon Hill is a kindergarten teacher at Charbrooke Elementary School and became a National Board Certified Teacher in the area of Early Childhood Generalist. Upon certification, Shannon shares, "Overall, going through the National Board process allowed me to take a deep dive into the standards required for an accomplished teacher in the early childhood generalist certification area. I learned the importance in applying myself as an educator and aligning my teaching practices to each standard through the process. Throughout this experience, I learned more about myself as an educator and ways in which I could enhance my performance to better meet the diverse needs of my students, as well as actively engage in conversations with colleagues and advocate for the needs of my students. While this process often brings, begins for many as a means for a pay increase, myself included, it ultimately ended with me feeling proud of the changes and growth I made in myself as an educator, and further ignited not just a passion in being the best educator I could be, but also collaborating with colleagues and working together to be the best we can be for our students." Chad Schmuck is a social studies teacher at Currituck County High School and became a National Board Certified Teacher in the area of Social Studies, History, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Chad shares this about his journey, "It was a meaningful process that allowed me to be reflective on my teaching. I was able to learn how to assess data, create meaningful assessments, and differentiate instruction. I feel that it made me a better teacher, and the pay increase was nice, too." Chad could not be with us tonight, as he is on the field performing duties as an assistant baseball coach, but I would like to extend a formal congratulations to him as well. In closing, I'd like to thank our Board of Education for continuing to support teachers who pursue National Board Certification. Your commitment to this process through both the component stipend and tonight's recognition is very much appreciated.
Ms. Hodges, I'd like to thank you for your work with all the National Board teachers. It's so nice for them to have the support.
Can you come up here and run up your picture in the middle?
She does a great job.
I'm so proud of y'all. I know the hard work.
I do, too. Congratulations.
All right, ready?
Congratulations.
At this time, I'll call on Mrs. Renee Doughty for Teacher Performance Bonus Recognition, our Assistant Superintendent.
It's feeling like we're Oprah tonight, and everybody's getting a war. So let's keep this party going. So, good evening, Chairman Kraft, members of the board, and Dr. Lutes. It's my pleasure to come before you this evening to recognize some more outstanding educators here in Currituck County. Tonight, we're specifically highlighting those teachers who qualified to earn teacher legislated performance bonuses for the following areas: fourth or fifth grade reading, fourth or through eighth grade math, advanced placement, and industry certifications and credentials. We're gonna begin with our elementary and middle school performance bonus recipients. I'd like to ask if recipients are in the audience to please come forward and stand before the Board of Education around the circle so we can embarrass everybody one more time. For a teacher in grades three through eight to be eligible to earn a performance bonus, they must have taught reading and/or math the previous school year, rank in the top twenty-five percent of the state, and/or LEA based on EVA scores in reading and/or math, and still be teaching for Currituck County schools. Please join me as we recognize the following educators for their outstanding performance in grades three, four, and five, reading and/or math. First, Lindsay Adams, third-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. I should ask, we'll hold our applause till the very end, because I do have a lengthy list. It's kinda like being at graduation and senior recognition one more time. Ms. Taylor Conti, third-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state. Ms. Sherry Evans, third-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state. Ms. Kelly Goines, third-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state. Ms. Amy Lieberman, third-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state. Ms. Annette Markham, third-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Carly Osman, third-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state. Teresa Simmons, third-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Leanne Edwards, fourth-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Moana Johnson, fourth-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state, top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Nicole Johnson, fifth-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Jean Philbrook, fourth-grade reading bonus, top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Katrina Costello, fourth-grade math bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Mr. Kevin Kidd, fifth-grade math bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state, top twenty-five percent in the LEA. And Ms. Kat Short, fourth-grade math bonus, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Let's give our elementary reading and math teachers a huge round of applause. Please on in for me. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Now, please join me in recognizing the following educators for their outstanding performance in grades six through eighth math. Ms. Patty Coffey, Currituck County Middle School, sixth grade math, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Karen Gazinski, Moyot Middle School, seventh grade math, top twenty-five percent in the state. Ms. Avery Jennings, Currituck County Middle School, seventh and eighth grade, math top twenty-five percent in the state. Ms. Chelsea Kovak, Moyot Middle School, eighth grade, math top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Betty McLeod, Moyot Middle School, eighth grade math, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Betty McLeod, Moyot Middle School, eighth grade math, top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Ms. Angel Swim, Currituck County Middle School, seventh and eighth grade math, top twenty-five percent in the state and top twenty-five percent in the LEA. Congratulations to these middle school math teachers. Teachers who teach advanced placement courses developed by the College Board are eligible to receive bonuses if they taught an AP course the previous year and remain teaching in the district the current school year. AP teachers are awarded performance bonuses for students who score a Level III or above on their AP exam. Please join me in recognizing these teachers for earning a performance bonus for teaching advanced placement courses. Ms. Brittany Alatabi, AP Chemistry. Mr. Thomas Andrikovik, AP Biology. Mr. Zach Dearman, AP Language. Ms. Valerie Person, AP Literature. Mr. Robert Griffin, AP Statistics. Ms. Anita Rubino, AP Studio Art 2D and 3D. Ms. Joanna Bloom, AP Government. Mr. Chad Schmuck, AP US History. And Ms. Claire Vinick, AP Studio Art 3D. Unfortunately, most of them had other activities like Mr. Schmuck out on the baseball field or other courses and classes that they were responsible for. Congratulations to Mr. Griffin and Ms. Vinick, who are here tonight to receive their recognition. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
And finally, career and technical education teachers who taught a course the previous year in which students could earn an industry certification and credential and are still employed with Currituck County Schools are also eligible for performance bonuses. CTE teachers are awarded bonuses for each industry certification or credential that their students attain. Please join me in recognizing the following CTE teachers. Mr. Charles Knott, business teacher at CCHS, industry certification for Microsoft. Ms. Carrie White, nursing fundamentals teacher at CCHS, industry credential for Nurse Aide I. Congratulations, Mr. Knott.
Great.
Currituck County Schools is proud of all of these educators who qualified and were recognized tonight for these legislative performance bonuses. Thank you.
So before we get to the approval of the agenda, I need to add an item to, or something to Item J on the Consent Agenda Individual Class Waivers. And so with that addition, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. And at this point in time, we're gonna hear from Dr. Lutes with Work Session Review.
We had a excellent work session this afternoon, covered a lot of ground, one of which was the school calendar, which will be on the, I believe, up for the Consent Agenda tonight for approval after much public input. We also had a school safety update, which we'll hear more on that in a few minutes, along with a budget review, which a discussion that occurred, pretty robust discussion. Again, the work session, we used that time to really hash through a lot of the details. They may not come out when we come in the general session, but always feel free to go back and watch the work session. We also reviewed the capital outlay budget, which you'll find on the Consent Agenda this evening. And most excitingly, we had a presentation on new story schools in our Special Education Department. We're excited to be moving forward with some more opportunities for our students. A school construction update, which we'll hear more on later, and a second reading for Policy forty-one thirty. That's all.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And at this point in time, we have the Student Board Member Report, and it looks like it's all up to you tonight, Scarlett.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I'm gonna be starting with Central Elementary. So Central Elementary had a great past month of school. We held our Title I Duke Energy Science Night and had over two-hundred-and-forty family members come and enjoy activities. We also held our book fair, which raised almost three-thousand-eight-hundred dollars to purchase books to enhance our library. Next will be Currituck County High School. Congratulations to Coach Hill and the CCHS Knights baseball team on winning the Easter baseball tournament. Anita Rubino has been voted as the Teacher of the Year at CCHS. Josephina Spruill has been voted as the Teacher Assistant of the Year at CCHS. Next will be Currituck County Middle School. Congratulations to Avery Jennings, our Teacher of the Year, and also a congratulations to Kate Cruz, our Teacher Assistant of the Year. Art students from Mr. Litrenus class visited the Chrysler Museum in Norfolk, Virginia this week. And band students from Mr. Copenhagener's class visited Elizabeth City State University yesterday, where they attended a blues and jazz concert. Next is Griggs Elementary School. The third nine-weeks PBIS incentive mad science came and showed our students some amazing science experiments. All grade level, all grade levels pre-K through fifth attended the assembly. We have had many field trips this past month. Second grade went on a field trip to the aquarium, fourth grade went to Currituck Wildlife Education Center, and pre-K will go to the Virginia Norfolk Zoo. We are looking forward to our GES Title I PTO Spring Carnival on April twenty-eighth from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Hava Nofsker has been voted as the GES Teacher of the Year, and Tammy Gordon has been voted as GES Teacher Assistant of the Year. We are so grateful for both of them. Next will be JP NAP Early College. Elizabeth City State University's Professor of Military Science brought a U.S. Army Reserves recruiter and two of ECSU's current ROTC cadets to speak with JPK students. JPK's sophomore class visited Old Dominion University for a tour of their campus. At the end of March, JPK held our third annual talent showcase where lots of students demonstrated their singing, dancing, and musical abilities. It was a fun evening spotlighting the various talents and abilities of many JPK students. Congratulations go out to Anna Thomas, who is voted JPK Teacher of the Year, and Sierra Tortino, who is voted Teacher Assistant of the Year. Tortino, who is voted Teacher Assistant of the Year. Next is Jarvisburg Elementary. JES is thrilled to announce that our School Battle of the Books team won the district competition. We want to thank Ms. Molly Parker for all her efforts in spearheading this event in addition to all the other media specialists and team coaches. 3rd grade students participated in Ag Day this week. Ms. Jessica Duncan did a great job organizing this event for all. Lastly, thank you to Ms. Pat Copenhagener and Lisa Lowery for bringing the musical talent of Currituck Middle to showcase the musical arts to our 5th grade students. Next is Knott Island Elementary. Knott Island is proud to recognize our Battle of the Books team and all their hard work preparing for the competition. Additionally, congratulations are in order for Ms. Rebecca Yelletz as our Teacher of the Year and Ms. Danielle Wilson as our Teacher Assistant of the Year. They are two very dedicated educators and we'll be lucky to have them as a part of our family. Finally, we will be hosting our book fair all next week and celebrating our military families as part of our Purple School of Distinction Month of the Military Child. Next is Moyauk Elementary. Moyauk Elementary has returned from spring break with a boost of energy, ready to finish up the 2022-2023 school year. Students got to take part in a cultural arts puppet show from puppeteer Hobie Ford earlier this week. Shout out to Currituck County for providing this unique and engaging performance for our students. This week is also Month of the Military Child Spirit Week, and MES is excited to see students dressed in uniform, red, white, and blue, and today, they all proudly wear their purple in support of military children. Next is Moyauk Middle. Moyauk Middle School is excited to announce Madison Hindra, CTE Agriculture Teacher of the Year, and Teacher of the Year, and Latora Moore as Teacher Assistant of the Year. We are also celebrating the Month of the Military Family during April with spirit days and special recognitions. Best of luck to our Science Olympiad team headed to the state competition this weekend. And lastly is Shawboro Elementary. Shawboro Elementary congratulates Ms. Dawn Wimmer as being selected Teacher of the Year and Mr. Chris Carroll for being selected as Teacher Assistant of the Year. They are both well-deserving educators. Save the date for our upcoming annual Field Day next Friday. Parents, if you would like to volunteer, please reach out with Ms. Lowman.
Thank you, you did a good job. Thank you.
That was a lot.
Thank you so much, okay. Next is our Public Comment Session. The Public Comment Session is a time when an individual or group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Please state your name and address when you come up. And the first one is Kelsey Roberts.
Hi, it's Kelsey Roberts, 107 Arrowhead in Moyauk. I'm here to speak about SROs, myself as well as my friend Jamie, who you will hear from next. We've spoken with a lot of you all. We very much appreciate the time that you guys have already given us. Of course, in watching national news, it has become very concerning as a parent. I have one elementary student in the fall, I will have two, at Moyauk Elementary. It's become more and more of a concern as far as safety of our children, as well as our teachers, all of their staff, and everyone present at the schools. My hope is that we're able to make a change to have SROs at our elementary schools. From what I have learned over the past couple of weeks, all of our middle schools have them, all of our high schools have them, but for whatever reason, they are not present at our elementary schools. As an elementary school parent, this terrifies me to know that perhaps my children are there almost as sitting ducks to a degree. So, I struggle to understand why we do not have them in elementary schools at the moment. I think all of us, unless we've been under a rock, have seen more of these horrible occurrences at elementary schools. I, of course, understand the need for them at middle schools, high schools, and the issues that the students themselves can bring, but our youngest and most innocent children don't have that equal protection that I feel like they need anymore. So, with all of that being said, I'm very hopeful, again, that we can make a difference here, and with Jamie, we've had several hundred signatures of parents that we've received throughout the county. Yes, you have that. So, we are very hopeful that with your all's help, we understand that some of this is with you guys, of course, also with the commissioners. We have spoken with some commissioners as well. We're very hopeful that we will be able to make a positive impact and to have every kid at every single school through our great county have the same protection that some of the older kids have. So, thank you, I appreciate all of you and what you guys do for all of us.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Thompson.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name's Jamie Thompson, I'm at 179 Rivers Edge Drive. I'm a mother to multiple children in the Currituck County School District, myself along with over 350 other parents here locally per our petition that you have, feel it's our responsibility to strongly encourage you to increase the school board budget to include an SRO at every Currituck County school. Currently, only our middle schools and high schools have full-time SROs. For years, only middle schools and high schools have needed a student, I'm sorry, a school resource officer. This is simple because of the threats that come within the school itself. Older kids fight, bring drugs, and occasionally weapons into the schools. Historically speaking, it's only been an issue amongst the middle and high schools. For elementary schools, the threats are now coming from outside of the school. There hasn't always been a need for SROs in elementary schools because there isn't as much violence amongst the students, but times have changed. I know from recent conversations with school board members and commissioners that SROs have been requested for all Currituck County schools, but have been denied due to a lack of budget or denied state funding due to being a wealthier county. Let's use some of that wealth towards protecting all Currituck County school-aged children and our incredible teachers. Elementary schools are now being threatened from outside sources like school shooters. This is happening because our elementary schools aren't being protected. The need for a deputy in our elementary schools is more important now than it's ever been. Since the elementary shooting in Uvalde, Texas last year, their school system has placed SROs in all of their schools, including elementarys. So, why wait? Why wait until one of our schools is targeted? Why wait until a threat happens right here in Currituck? The population here is growing tremendously in our county. Let's get ahead of the problem and protect our children now. These reasons only scratch the surface of the serious need for SROs at every elementary school in our county. As parents, we're no longer willing to sit back and simply hope for the best. We're here demanding action and a resolution until we know without a shadow of a doubt that there is a hired protector for each and every school in our county. We cannot simply hope that nothing ever occurs to any of our precious children or teachers, and we, as parents, refuse to let this slide. Think about how many parents, as well as county officials, now regret not taking action before tragedy struck their elementary school. We're here to help create a resolution, and we will not stop until we know our children are better protected each and every day. No parent should have to fear for their child's safety while they're in any Currituck County school. If we consider only the most recent tragedy in Nashville, it's been stated that Covenant School was targeted and chosen to incur such awful violence because there wasn't security in place there. We must remain better prepared to protect those that are most precious to us, our children and our teachers. So, please do the right thing, increase the school board budget so that we can include an SRO at every Currituck County school. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Woods.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Lutz. Just going to share a couple of CTE updates with you. I'd like to share that our CTE/CTSO accomplishments from our students, first of all, FBLA within the past month, have had eight students placed in the top four, and will continue on to the Nationals in June in Atlanta. 14 of those students placed in the top 10. We had our HOSA perform over spring break, and one student placed in the top 10. I would like to also thank the teachers, the advisors, who work all year preparing these students to be successful at the state and national level. Julie West, Andrew Knott, Megan Fraser, and Carrie White. I would like to thank the board for supplying water and lunch to the students and the county community members yesterday for the Ag Day. It was a wonderful day of students fishing and petting the animals and learning everything about agriculture in our county. It's an incredible event, I encourage everybody to come out and see it. And lastly, we have a couple of upcoming events. I know the plant sale is on everybody's tip of tongue, everybody's talking about it. It is happening tomorrow and Saturday, so come on out and check out all the great things that the students have done. We will be having a job fair for both Currituck High School and JP Knapp students on May 3rd at Currituck High School during the three lunches. We currently have about 25 businesses that are coming, and every day, we're adding more. So, students will be able to be employed. And finally, we are offering the First Career Signing Day for our students. This is an activity with Currituck Chamber of Commerce, where we will be honoring students that are enrolling in a COA/CTE pathway, enlisting in the military, or being employed for our senior students, both at Currituck and JP Knapp. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Robert Griffin.
Good evening, I'm Robert Griffin, 436 Poplar Branch Road in Poplar Branch. And I just want to express that I am certainly appreciative of the recognition I have already received tonight. It's an honor to teach AP students. And the reason I am being, or I was recognized earlier this evening, is because of the work and the preparation that those students did. Very little on my part, it's what they do that gives us as teachers recognition. So, I'm very appreciative of what they did to learn the AP Statistics. And I just want to share that there are a significant number of students at Currituck County High School who make the choice to attend a four-year college and university. That's what they choose to do. And at Currituck County High School, we offer a wide variety of AP courses, as was mentioned earlier this evening. And any student who is planning to attend a four-year college or university may choose an AP course that's going to be beneficial to them in that pathway. These courses give students a really an accurate picture of what they can expect in order to be successful at a four-year college and university. And they are the most rigorous courses that Currituck County High School offers to prepare students for that level of success for those who make that choice. So, I thank the board, and I thank the administration of Currituck County Schools for supporting these courses at Currituck County High School and the numerous opportunities that you allow them to have. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I want to add, my daughter was in that AP Statistics class, and Mr. Griffin is very humble. He helps children achieve what they achieve because he teaches the curriculum and he challenges them, and he gives them an opportunity to be able to be successful in the test. So, thank you very much, Mr. Griffin, for all your work.
And lastly, Richard Barcalow.
I'd come to ask a question.
I need you to state your name and address.
Richard Barcalow, 107 Chestnut Drive, Moyauk.
Thank you.
First of all, I came to ask a question about something, but first, after seeing about the purple, the thing for the military. I've got grandkids that have been from Florida to Japan, to New Jersey, and now in Missouri. And, I mean, I'm just so happy that somebody did something, is doing something like this. So proud of you. I really got to congratulate you.
What I wanted to know about was the accreditation. I haven't seen any updates or anything about it, and I've been, I came in last month or the month before and was asking about it, and I was wondering, could you give us an update?
It is on the web, we do keep it on our website, but secondly, we have a meeting, it's going to be in my closing notes, normally we don't engage, but I'll do it.
Okay.
We have a meeting with Cognia, they're coming here, who is the accreditation group. They'll be here all day on Monday, meeting with various groups. So, we're continuing to move forward with the process as we said we would.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, school safety update from Ms. Virginia Arrington.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this important topic of school safety. Since our last update on school safety, Currituck County Schools, in partnership with Currituck County Sheriff's Office, conducted lockdown drills district-wide the week of February 27th. At the end of that week, feedback was provided to stakeholders on March 3rd through social media. Three points that were shared were that during drills, no one can enter or exit the building until the exercise is concluded. Individuals using spam blockers may not be getting bright arrow message calls, and we encourage parents to talk with children about actions or communications that allude to threats of violence in any way. Checking for identification has been a process that has been in place in Currituck County Schools for several years. The week of April 3rd, a reminder message was shared with our staff and families that Currituck County Schools expects visitors to have identification when coming on campus and expects to have that identification checked. We are making sure that the last person out of the hallways ensure that all doors are closed properly, that we are not propping doors open for any reason, and teachers are also reminding students not to open any doors for visitors entering the building. And this is really important because if a visitor is at the door ringing the doorbell and a student walks by, we don't want that student to feel like they are being rude or unwelcoming. That's what they've been instructed to do for the safety of all. The office staff at each school have an emergency alert button to contact the sheriff's office directly in case of emergency. This is inspected regularly so that the school knows that it is working properly. Looking ahead, Dr. Lutz, on behalf of the Board of Education, has requested funding for seven SROs for the elementary schools. Under our strategic plan, we have worked to improve communication processes for all of our stakeholders. We are providing releases notifying families of threats investigated at our schools, and we are notifying parents of drills. As always, Currituck County Schools welcomes feedback from our parents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have April Budget Amendments.
Good evening, Chairman Kraft, fellow board members, and Dr. Lutz. The first thing I have for your approval this evening are budget amendments, starting with the State Public School Fund. We saw an increase here of $157,633. That was the result of budgeting for summer reading camp, drivers at fuel reserve, transportation, early college reimbursement, and fuel reserve. We received a decrease in classroom teachers due to North Carolina Virtual Public Schools. We also had a decrease in children with special needs due to a headcount drop, and we had various budget transfers needed to operate. Next, we have our Local Current Expense Fund. That nets to zero, and it was various budget transfers needed for insurance, public relations, and operation of plants, which is also facilities. Next, we have our Federal Budget. We had an increase here of $51,039. We budgeted for a new school psychology bonus allotment, additional funds for Title I, IDA grants to states, Title II, Title III, and we received a decrease in funding for IDA special needs targeted assistance. And lastly, we have the other local funds. We had a small increase here of $2,535, and that was a reimbursement we received for the student tech team. Have any questions on the budget amendments?
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented to us? Motion. Motion. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second that we approve the April budget amendments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, budget amendments are approved. And next, we have the 2023-24 school budget adoption, which we went over in detail at the board meeting, or at the, I'm sorry, at the work session. Do I have a motion to approve the school budget?
I make a motion that we approve the budget for our next school year.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'm going to abstain from voting. There's a, there's a perceived conflict of interest because of the athletic portion of the budget.
Okay.
So I'm going to abstain from voting until I can further discuss with the school attorney if that's any conflict, because my husband handles the athletic budget. So I'm just going to abstain from voting.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I would like to add to this budget. You know, you will not see school resource officers on here. Dr. Lutz asked for that in addition to this. But we have made a formal request for six for our current elementary schools and eventually one more.
Yeah, we don't need to add it to this, but we need the public to know.
Yes.
Okay. So we, any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the school budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. School budget is adopted. Oh. I see, I was supposed to give her that.
What's that?
She was supposed to give me that. Okay, that's fine. School construction update. Dr. Lutz, yeah, she gave it to us earlier.
I went with it. Okay. All right, we didn't have any meetings scheduled over the past month, however, both projects continue to be on time or, better yet, ahead of schedule, because we are going to have plenty of students to fill the buildings come August 28th next year. Pictures of Moayak Elementary School along the way, again, you can see great progress made. You see the ground's getting smoothed out. Again, the addition of the building at the elementary school is most welcomed, allows us to join the cafeteria to the main building, which has always been an issue. And to do that, we removed the old kindergarten building, which was classic 1970s construction, which no one will miss. Again, the Sussex, which is the crew that we have worked with on the expansions of both the middle schools, will be building the Talls Creek project as well, and we are excited to work with them. We're also learning, and they are learning along the way, things that can be done better or things that perhaps were missed, and they're very easy to work with. As far as Moayak Middle School go, again, the easier of the two projects, although you would argue, I'm sure that Ms. Reynolds and her staff will welcome a full cafeteria where our kids can eat every day. We'll double the size of the cafeteria when this project is finished and add six classrooms. The building was built for a natural extension, so this project is the easier of the two. Again, things are moving along. Excited to announce for our Talls Creek site, we will be engaging with our kindergarten students, our first grade students, and our second grade students at both Charbroe Elementary and Moayak Elementary. Now, why would we engage with the K-2 crowd and our students? Because that, those are the kids that will eventually, or could end up, at the Talls Creek site. And so, third grade and above, they will be in middle school. It may seem like it's a long time away, but it will be here. You moms know this, moms and dads, it is gone in a blink of an eye. So we're excited sometime in the next few weeks, we're going to be engaging with our elementary students, and we're going to get feedback on both the mascots and school colors. So they'll be presented with a selection of choices. We'll match the colors carefully with the mascot.
No chartreuse.
So we'll take care of that end of things. I won't, but others that understand color will. And we look forward to a pretty exciting process along the way. We think that's a great way to engage with our kids. We are not going to the other elementary schools because we do not want to create any illusion that there'll be a redistricting southward. Or northward, they're going to be, these are the two buildings, and these are the buildings that we'll pull for Talls Creek. So, any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda, and we do need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, if that, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the consent agenda being approved, motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, so informational items, our next Board of Education meeting is May 18th, 2023. Work session will be at the PLC at 4:00 PM, and then the Board of Education meeting will be here at the historic Currituck County Courthouse at 6:30. Also, graduation ceremony for JP Napp Early College will be May 19th, 7:00 PM at the College of the Albemarle, and then graduation ceremony for Currituck County High School will be June 9th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. And we'll have board member comments. We'll start with you, Ms. Parker.
Okay. Thanks to all the students and staff that came out tonight, those presentations were absolutely incredible, and to the staff that received recognition, thank you. Thank you so much for continuing your education, for continuing to strive to be the best educator that you can be. We really, really appreciate that. To members of the community who continue to reach out, please do not get frustrated when I continue to encourage you to work the chain of commands. Start at the school level. We have wonderful building administrators that want to be able to help you, and they want to be able to help solve problems. So we're just going to continue to work those chain of commands when it's appropriate, and then there are times when it's appropriate to reach out to us. But please give our staff and principals an opportunity to help you. To the parents that spoke tonight, thank you for advocating for your children. Your active participation is exactly what we need in Currituck County to make this school system exactly what it can become. We want active vocal parents who care about their children. We appreciate your passion. We appreciate your commitment to safety for all children. I know that this board, and I know that Dr. Lutz and his staff shares the support for the elementary resource officers. That's why that recommendation was made, and I'm confident that as we work together and we show that as a community that this is something that we support, we're going to be able to do this for our children. So thank you for taking the lead on this.
All right. My turn?
How about your turn?
Okay. Congrats to all of our educators recognized tonight. That made us all, I think, very proud, everyone that was here. Many of our schools have been celebrating Military Appreciation Week this week, as we saw in that presentation too. So thank you to all of our military families and to the grandfather, that was, that was really touching that you thanked Mrs. Kelly and her staff like that. April is Assistant Principal Recognition Week or Month, and so I just want to say thank you to all of the assistant principals. We appreciate all you do in the schools every day, and of course, congratulations to the Teachers of the Year and the Teacher Assistants of the Years. As the senior proms are approaching, I wish all of our students that attend to have a memorable and safe night, and thank you to all the staff and volunteers that make this happen. Finally, I appreciate all the parents and community that have reached out regarding the safety in our schools. It's very important, and I know that we are all doing as much as we can to keep our students safe every day, so thank you.
Okay. Ms. Banks?
Yeah, I would also like to thank the two ladies that spoke tonight about the school resource officers. As a retired law enforcement officer, it's, it's very helpful in that capacity for the public to speak out, and don't, don't stop until, until you get your answer. The request has been made, and hopefully we'll, we'll get the results that we need. So thank you once again for, for coming tonight. And I also like to recognize the teachers that got the awards tonight. My wife actually got one of those awards, so that little bonus is a little, is nice. So congratulations to them. Great Ag Day this week at, at the, at the park. It was, it was kind of great to see, I was a member of the FFA when I was a kid. I can probably still get my jacket, too, by the way. Great to see, I can. It was, it was just, it was just encouraging to see those kids, the, the older kids teaching the younger kids, and they were engaged, and it was, it was a great event out there.
It was good. Okay.
I'd like to congratulate all of the folks who were recognized tonight for your hard work. I'd also like to thank JP Napp and Moayak Elementary. Great job on presenting. I really enjoyed it, and I, the JP Napp, what they're learning with that is amazing. That's great. Thanks to those who spoke in the public comments. I too support SROs, and it's something that, it's not just come to the table this year. You know, I, I retired eight years ago, and we were talking about it before I retired. So it's, it's something that I feel like it, we just have more and more bad things happening in our country, and so it's definitely time. And I'd like to thank Mr. Kevin McCord because he, he advocates for SROs as well, and I appreciate that. I attended Ag Day yesterday. It was amazing, those FFA students and the teachers, and Ms. Wood was there. It was a great event, lots, just such a great educational experience for our third graders and our high schoolers. It was great. Also attended the SpongeBob Musical, and that was amazing. I had, I had the opportunity to go to one of the baseball games during the Easter tournament. That field looked beautiful, and our players did great. Coming up, we have Teacher Appreciation Week, May 2nd through the 6th. I'd like to thank all those who are involved with educating our children, and if you have time, take a moment and write your children's teacher a note, and let her know how much you appreciate what she's doing, and not just the teachers, but all educators that are involved in the schools. And upcoming, coming up, we have the plant sale, as was mentioned. Please make sure you go out to our greenhouse behind Currituck County Middle School, look at all the beautiful plants and buy some. And I'm so excited about this job fair coming up, May 3rd, that's great, and the career signing day. I love that. So thank you all for everything you do.
Absolutely. Dr. Lutz?
Okay. Well, so far tonight, we've such an eclectic group of comments that you've taken almost all of mine. One small correction, the state has officially declared May 8th through the 12th as Teacher Appreciation Week. That came in hot off the press about three hours ago.
Okay.
So there was confusion around the dates, and the state has made that official.
But I'm sure teachers will take both weeks of appreciation.
Yes, two weeks, they deserve it.
Two weeks, easy.
I, I've always said, and I've, I have a unique career, I've taught in multiple states and so on, and I, I don't think anyone works harder than a North Carolina teacher. The pay and the benefits are certainly not why you come to work every day, and I can't thank our staff enough. Watching everyone come up here this evening, I've had the opportunity to work, again, in different capacities in this district, know every one of those people that came up here. They're good people, they work hard, and they strive to get better, and I'm proud to serve in the role I'm in. Speaking of great kids, we have the Regional Special Olympics next week over at Northeastern High School.
When is that?
That is on Tuesday.
On 11.
Tuesday at 11:00. Tuesday at 11:00. That, again, if you need your bucket filled, try to make your way over there. There's no better day than the Special Olympics and watching our kids perform. I did also, again, I'll come back to the Cognia visit. They'll be here on Monday. We're again excited to continue moving that process forward as we reach district accreditation. Again, it's not a quick process, but we're going to get there. So with that, I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Well, they stole all mine. I do want to thank Moayak Elementary and JP Napp Early College for their presentations during our school spotlight. They did an amazing job, and I personally think that every student in, from at least high school, needs to have that class to learn how to manage money. Emma was a hoot, but she always has been, so. I want to give a huge congratulations to our, all of our teachers who were recognized tonight, particularly our National Board, that's kind of near and dear to my heart. I did go through that process, and I know how hard it is. Because of some travel I've done and spring break, I didn't get to every school this month, which is unusual for me. But anyway, I did have the opportunity to help judge the Notts Island Science Fair. Oh my gosh, it was so much fun. It was, it was a tough job. It was all third, fourth, and fifth grade students at Notts Island, but they all worked really hard, and the projects were excellent. I also had the pleasure of being the moderator for the Currituck County Elementary School Battle of the Books. This is about the 10th year for me, I think. These students amaze me every year, and this year was no different. And congratulations to Jarvisburg Elementary on their first place win. By the way, I taught Molly Rose in third grade. Parker, Molly Parker. And I'm extremely grateful for all of you who signed up and all of you who take out your time to come and share your feelings and thoughts about what's going on, and, and just know that we're working really hard to, to make that happen. And with that said, I need a motion to have us adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second? I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.